Good evening. It is Wednesday, August 20th, and we're here for our night meeting. We have two commissioners present, so we have a quorum. We have our administrator and the clerk of the board. And at this time, I'll call the meeting to order and ask everybody to please rise and join in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First item on the agenda is the adoption of the current agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to amend the agenda as presented and pull items three, four, and five from consent and move for approval of an amended agenda.
I will second. There's been a motion for the pulling of items three, four, and five from the consent agenda with the rest of the agenda intact. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next is public comment. Is there anybody for public comment? Anybody on the phone? Nobody's on the phone. I don't see anybody coming to the mic. So we'll close public comment. Next item on the agenda, I'll look for the approval of the consent agenda, which is a total of three items, one, two, and six.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of consent agenda items one, warrants, two minutes, and six, resolution two zero two five dash two four six as presented.
There's been a motion, I second. There's been a motion, a second, for the approval of the three items on the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Takes us down to regular business, resolution twenty twenty five two forty seven, approval of opioid litigation claims presented by Mr. Briggs.
Good evening, Board. I am asking for your approval of...
Were you talking to the mic?
A little rusty here. So good evening. So I'm asking for approval here tonight for the board to authorize our county administrator to sign on to these opioid agreements. So in June of this year, the Washington State Attorney General's Office entered into nine separate agreements for settlements up to $122 million payable over the next fifteen years. One of these settlements is with Purdue Pharma and the Sackler family. The other eight are with other opioid manufacturers. The board will recall, we have the one memorandum of understanding with Washington, with all the municipalities, which limits what the funds can be spent on. Specifically, they have to be spent on opioid substance abuse abatement, like treatment, and, you know, facilities related to that treatment. So it's limited in what these funds can be used for. It does look like the anticipated allocation to Franklin County would be $1.9 million and to Franklin County as a whole, including the city of Pasco, would be $4.4 million. If not enough cities and municipalities sign on to this agreement, it would be void. So we are asking for the board to move to approve this again. We're just authorizing the county administrator to work with myself, and we will get these agreements signed on the board's behalf, on the county's behalf.
Questions, commissioners?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So if I understand this process, if we were not to sign on to this with the other counties, we would then be responsible for initiating litigation on our own and seeing that through at our cost until which point that we may or may not be paid for, you know, pay these funds potentially or not.
Right. That's correct. And keep in mind, Purdue is in a Chapter 11 bankruptcy, so that would be very difficult to submit a claim at the eleventh hour. They won't exist as a corporation here in a few months if all of this goes through. I don't know about all the other manufacturers specifically, but I know with respect to Purdue, you know, it would be very difficult and, you know, costly. Obviously, this is complex litigation we're talking about, very expensive.
Do you, do you have a, I know that this is an impossible question, but do you have, you know, what a potential rough timeline might look like? Is this a, you know, one year worth of litigation and then a payout would potentially begin after that over a period of years? Or you have any idea on that?
I'm not sure. I know the settlement itself is structured to pay out over fifteen years, so we wouldn't get the money in a lump sum. So I'm not sure specifically how much that would calculate in terms of annual payments or monthly payments.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you. No more questions.
What can we use these funds for?
So they can be used to, specifically for opioid substance abuse disorder. I'm paraphrasing here. I'm not saying the right terminology, but it can be used for things like that. So treatment facilities, you know, funding programs to get people off of opioid use, just things like that. You know, I haven't, I was just looking at it recently. It's pretty big. Well, it's narrow, but they list a lot of different programs that you can use it for. So I don't know off the top of my head. Let me look here.
I would think you'd want to be on the proactive instead of the reactive. Once they're involved in that, it's hard to get them off of it.
Right.
But proactively, you could, that's why I think Mr. Danzel's question is very important.
So there's treatment, so there's treatment programs, prevention programs, and then things where you're just reacting to it, like Narcan.
Okay.
You can use it for things like that.
As I've gone through here, I'm noticing that all the other counties are the highest figure getter on the, on the money being applied for. We're at 1.9 and Pasco's at 2.4. Can you answer that?
I believe it's, I believe it's per capita. Just sort of glancing at it, you see the smaller jurisdictions have less. That's what it appears to be, like Kelso, for example.
Well, our like-minded county is Grant. Grant County's going to get $5,700,000. Moses Lake is only getting 1.2.
Yeah. I would be curious to look at the proportionate population and see why that is, because that was my guess, because the problem itself is pretty ubiquitous across our population. So, you know, more people are going to have more problems with opioid use disorder. So it, that's just my guess on how they calculated these, but again, I could be mistaken on that.
Okay. That's all the questions I have.
I don't know. I think it's because they have more people than the rest of the county.
Okay. If there's no further questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of resolution two zero two five dash two four seven, approval of opioid litigation claims.
I second. There's been a motion, a second, for resolution twenty twenty five dash two four seven, approval of opioid litigation claims. Is there any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Moves us down to resolution twenty twenty five two forty eight, closed record public So at this time, we will now open the hearing for the closed record appeal and the closed record hearing for the Cherrywood Plan Unit Development Files number appeal twenty twenty five dash oh four, SEPA twenty twenty five dash oh two, and PUD twenty twenty five dash oh one. For the record, this is a combined closed record appeal and decision hearing on the plan, planning commission recommendation. Commissioner Bowman, have you had any ex parte communication you need to disclose involving this matter for any reason to recuse yourself from these public proceedings?
I do not.
As I do not. Have you reviewed the entire record?
I have.
As I have. Are there any questions before we start?
Have there been any ex parte communications with either member of the board tonight regarding this application or the appeal?
We will now proceed with the appeal. Mr. Hales, Mr. Harpster, and Mr. Fickles, is there any objection to all the commissioners hearing this appeal? Each should answer no. There's no objection. As a closed record appeal, no new information can be presented. Please remember to base your case on the record before this body. Mr. Hales, we have you appeal filing, and as the appellant, you may proceed in presenting your case.
Can I ask some procedural questions?
Absolutely. We have our attorney right here.
We have, we have two people, Mr. Hoyle and myself, to speak. Is that okay?
Well, it's a little bit complicated, so I think there was one appeal filed.
Yeah. It's a joint appeal, but we were told that we could have two to three people speak.
Well, I would say sort of yes and no. I think the, on the appeal portion of it, it should be one person speaking for either side, and you'd have as much time as you need. But also, because this is a closed record hearing on the plat itself, the public has a comment period during this and would be entitled to three minutes?
No comments. Closed record.
Right, 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 but they can, but they can comment on that.
No.
Only people with participation standing that presented, that made a presentation before the planning commission can speak at this.
Only people that spoke during the planning commission hearing can speak tonight.
Or that submitted written.
Or that submitted appeal. I think we're down to Mr. Hales only. I would object to anybody other than Mr. Hales speaking today for the record.
And I can take the amount of time that's needed.
Mr. Briggs, can you provide clarity on that?
Right. I'm looking at, for everyone's benefit, I'm looking at Franklin County Code fourteen eighty zero six zero, procedure for closed record decision appeal.
Why don't we, it's been suggested that we take a five-minute recess. Why we review this to make sure, but I believe on a closed record hearing, if you presented before that, the board, they're the only ones that can present here. Is this true?
So both, both Ed Hoyle and myself presented or had written statements.
The planning commission.
So commissioners, just as previous hearings are concerned, closed record hearings, there is no communication with the public whatsoever. The record stands on its own. The only question in front of you tonight would be if you would allow two people to talk regarding the appeal portion of this, not the actual, only the appeal can someone present, not the actual hearing itself. If they have standing, that they're still not allowed to talk. That's why only staff answers questions when you've had other closed record hearings and there is no testimony.
I better understand. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
Is that the way you are reading it, Jeff?
So I'm looking at subparagraph D. It says that "The hearing shall commence with a presentation by the director or the director's designee of a general background of the proposed development and issues in dispute. After the director's presentation, the appellant shall first present oral argument, and then other parties of record shall make their arguments." So the question's whether these other folks in the room are parties of record.
They are. In the appeal, you can see that it is a joint appeal, and Mr. Hoyle's signature is one of the signatures on the appeal, I would say, and he made statement in the previous hearing.
Right. I'm somewhat reluctant to, and I would defer to the board on this, but I'm somewhat reluctant to allow additional people because we're not, they're not part of a corporation or homeowners association. Typically, it would be if you're one legal entity, you can submit an appeal. You wouldn't want to, or we can't really allow a bunch of people who aren't the same legal person to submit an appeal to the board.
This is a homeowners association, and the signatures that are on are, and I'm a representative of that homeowners association, so it could under there.
Right. Well, I would, and I would just add that typically you would need an attorney to represent a corporate entity.
Well, the other option is if there's no limit on that time, I can give the statements. It's basically a summary to make sure that the information was understood.
As the appellant, that's, yes.
But it sounds like Mr. McCart needs to go first, right?
No.
Based on our own rules of procedure, yes.
So commissioners, I have, I have no, no presentation in front of you tonight. I'm sorry. I think our code is erroneous in that procedure. I've never done that before. Closed record hearing. I will let Mr. Hales proceed unless you have direct questions of what's in the record. You have direct questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Do you have any direct questions?
I was prepared to, to go about it slightly different, so I did have some questions. There was, there's extensive statements and information provided in the appeal. One of them, specifically on page thirteen, it's a statement that was made that says, Natasha Mendoca's written comments were submitted timely and not included in the packet to commissioners. Do we, any idea if that's accurate? It says page thirteen.
Yeah, actually, I, do you remember what comment that was, sir?
I don't. I just, I'm just reading through the.
It was in the written record submitted to the planning commission, and I believe that's on page sixteen in your planning commission record. If you give me a minute, I can try and find it.
The time code was at one twenty six thirteen when that comment was made. She made that comment during the hearing.
So if you look at page eighteen and nineteen of the staff, of the packet to the planning commission, you will find Natasha's, Ryan Witten and Natasha Mendocia's comments.
So you can confirm it was provided to the planning commission?
It was provided to the planning commission, sir.
Thank you. Reading through this, there was numerous areas of concern to me in the appellate's appeal, I guess. One thing I, that concerned me is that people feel like that the county commissioners don't do their due diligence. Here's a comment, says "The county commissioners don't have time for, so they won't read it." That concerns me, as I am very diligent and work very hard to, and take my job very, very seriously. And throughout this appeal, there's numerous times where disparaging comments are made by both the commission, about the commissioners and staff of being biased, misleading, false, inaccurate, not following procedures, incomplete, inaccurate, biased, withheld from the public, unfair practices, false statements, inaccurate statements, misrepresentations. And that is of great concern to me if any of that is in any way accurate. And so I look forward to hearing the process tonight. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll leave that as my comments for now.
Okay. We will proceed.
James Hales, address two seventy Geezler Road adjacent to this. I also represent, there's signatures of twenty individuals in here, that, twenty households. And there were others who did not get to sign, but were not notified in advance that were across Columbia River Road, who also had been of concern, who talked to me later. First of all, I do want to, I want to appreciate, I'm grateful for what you do. I know that the time that you take and the heart that you put into it, and I know nothing in this is intended to be disparaging of character for any of the commissioners or any of the staff. This is purely a procedural thing, and nothing was intended to be defamatory in any way. We're grateful for your service and all that you do, and especially, Mr. Bowman, I'm grateful for that statement that you do. And Mr. Didier, go through and read those and pay particular attention. I know the quantity that you'd have to go through. One of the submissions was a several hundred-page water proposal, which is part of the SEPA document, and that is one of the issues. Part of it was not even fully made available to us prior to that. We got that, we learned about additional pages afterwards. And so I know there's a large amount to consume, but I appreciate you taking the time to read through, especially even the appeal. As for the errors that were mentioned, if you were to go through and review the YouTube video of the hearings, you'll see in the PowerPoint presentation, crossed out and amended and corrected statements. Those corrections were made by me, as submitted to Mr. McCart prior to that hearing, because many of the information that was presented was just inaccurate, the findings of fact were not factual. Even as you look at this, they, one of the statements was that it was 3.5 miles away from the city, and I provided a Google map in there that it's 5.1 from Douglas Fruit, which is the outermost edge, not even where any homes are. It's closer to six to seven if you go to where any homes are. And they said it was 3.5. They, they said that there were, part of the inaccuracies was that there were point, quarter acre lots in this area. As you know, there can be no quarter acre lots in county. You can't even put a septic system on that. And so several of those things were crossed out, but all of those things, even as they went through and used my comments to correct what staff had submitted, they still had additional errors and mistakes in it. The research was very poor. And this isn't to be defamatory in any way, it's just a statement of fact. And where this is, was, I talked with Mr. McCart and asked if he had reviewed it. He, I understand what he says, he doesn't have time to go through and review everything, but it should have been reviewed. It's a significant thing. As you look through my statement, my written statement in this appeal, goes through and it shares some of those point by point. Let me just point out one of those, as far as they, this, you can and you do have the authority and to be able to reject this proposal clearly and purely on the grounds of procedural. But it's much deeper than that. And this is, if you look at the SEPA, or the, there were also the SEPA errors that were submitted. The number, those are all listed out line by line. That's what it has reference to, the A-10, the B-1E, the B-1G. These are errors in the SEPA, problems with the SEPA. The concern that, as Mr. Bowman referred to, is that despite all of this, despite this large and very inaccurate in lot sizes and surrounding, the surrounding developments around it, it was said in the proposals that this was, not only, it was Mr., let's see where'd that go, Peter Harpster, Mr. Harpster, who, he said that it was not only consistent, but, where's the word he used? He says not only compatible, but he even used the word consistent with the comprehensive plan, which is, it's completely inaccurate. There are five acre lots, and only five acre lots to the south of this development, where it was portrayed to the planning commission that this is half acre is very normal. This area was removed from the comprehensive, removed from the urban development plan in 2008. That's shown on your, the comprehensive plan. If you look at my page nineteen, but comprehensive plan, page forty-two, where it shows a map, this area is actually removed from the urban growth. You can also see, I guess, on page fifty of the comprehensive plan, or page twenty-one of what I submitted, under the Columbia River West area. And it said, "Prior to the Growth Management Act, numerous shoreline lots and adjacent tract developments were built along Franklin County shore. These lots ranged inside from one half acres to five acres. 1995, it was designated to be included in the Pasco urban growth area." This is all from the comprehensive plan. "Consistent with the existing land use patterns in the area, development has continued within this area since the adoption of the 1995 comprehensive plan. Then this part, 'At Pasco's request, this area was removed from its urban growth boundary as part of the 2008 plan, and it was not included in the 2021 expansion.'" Those lots which are of a half acre, or actually, there's twenty-two lots total, that was another inaccuracy that was represented, there are twenty-two lots total, five of which don't have, twenty-two lots total less than one acre in this area. They were all done prior to, during the time of this urban, this part of the urban growth, so prior to 2008. And of those twenty-two, five of them do not have houses on them. Questionable whether they could pass a perk test for those. But there's been no development, no building on those things in over twenty years. So to use that little thing that was done prior to this being removed as the Urban Growth Act to say that this is consistent, or the wording that he used that was compatible but consistent is just inaccurate. All of the lots to the south of this are five acres. This whole area was zoned five acres until it was, or RC five, until more recent years, the past five years where it was changed into RC one. It was approved to do one acre lots. Mr. Jim Kelly had that approved, and then they didn't go forward with it. They built some along the shoreline, and I'm not sure if it was a water problem or what it was. But to say that that is, to inappropriately designate that this is normal for this area, all those lots, the very few that they were, and I wanted to give you a picture of what this is, is, so twenty-two out of sixty-three lots in a two-mile radius, twenty-two out of, we're not going to the east of the canal, that's all twenty acres or with a couple five acre portions, but twenty-two out of sixty-three lots, or thirty-five percent, is less than one acre. And some of those are point seven five acres lots. So, so when you go and look at this, if you were to change and add ninety-four homes, ninety-four lots of half acre size in that seventy-five acre parcel, it would shift the dynamic from currently being, it's currently seventy-four, or sixty-five percent of lots are over that one acre, and seventy-three percent of homes are over one acre. It would shift that to seventy-four percent of lots under half acre, or half acre and under. That's a complete flop from seventy-three percent of homes, one acre and more, or sixty-five percent of lots, because remember those five lots that don't have anything on it that are half acre size. But it would flip it clear to the opposite direction of seventy-four percent of the lots at half acre. This is the largest, highest concentrated... This is the largest, highest concentrated development this far from a city, anywhere in Franklin County. It is, it would be the largest, anywhere in, and largest and most dense at half acre, ninety-four homes, six, five point one to six miles away from city boundaries, even farther from homes in septic. It would be the largest in Franklin County, most dense and farthest away from a city. It would be the largest in Grant County, it'd be the largest in Adams County. It's just unprecedented to do this. Now, closer to this city, part of the Growth Management Act is that there's no leapfrogging. This clearly leapfrogs. There's all kinds of land in between there. Um, so, as, as we look at that, that's a, that's a major concern, the inappropriateness of it. There's four points that have to be met in order to do a PUD. And those I laid out there for you in it, that one is, is it compatible and consistent? I think we've addressed that right there. The answer is no, and it could be rejected for that. They have to meet all four of the PUD in order to be consistent. The second one is that it needs to be, um, it needs to be incurred, uh, enhance the quality of life while protecting the health, safety and welfare of residents. I have and submitted in there, and it was submitted at the previous hearing, the same thing was submitted, but there's signatures of over twenty residents. Every resident on Larkspur, every resident on, on Geesler, every resident within a mile of this, except two. Those two did not sign because of religious reasons or other reasons where they just don't get involved in public, uh, uh, into, um, uh, politics. But that to me says that it is not enhancing the quality. And they're not just saying, "Well, we don't like this." They're saying this isn't appropriate for this area. When they came out, it was zoned RC one. And as you look in the, in the statements in the, um, comprehensive plan, it, it clearly states that you can't go less than one acre. And so, moving out there decades ago, that was their understanding is even though it would, could be changed from five down to one, it wouldn't go less than one. And, uh, that's a significant thing for people who intentionally move away from the city. And, and then to have this come in and, and try to change it, the PUD is circumventing, is trying to circumvent the RC one development code. And it's not appropriate. There's, there's another additional point is safety. They say that it will be consistent because they'll put up block walls. They say that, you know, this, this new, um, uh, uh, where, where you can go down to fifteen percent green, green space. That change that was done, the fifteen percent of green space that they're using is green space that could not be built on anyway. It's part of an easement along two, it's bordered on two sides by canals, on the south by the Squatzel and by the SCB, SCBID canal to the, uh, east. And so there's a, an area where you can't build within a hundred feet. You can't do anything within a hundred feet of it. You can't put a wall or do anything within that. So, that area ends up being the green space that they create. One of, if you look at the comments that were in that, uh, planning commission meeting, there was a former, there's a, uh, city planner who previously worked on this and he had opposed this. He said, "It's not safe. It's not safe to put houses this close to it." He was removed from it. He made comments in that meeting, though. And, and yet it was just bypassed. It was rubber, it, the impression is the appearance of unfairness, to use the legal term, that it was bypassed and rubber stamped by an inaccurate, incorrect, flawed proposal that was made by a contractor, ABHL, who on their own website says that basically their, their purpose is to help their clients, this is the exact phrasing, making our clients needs our number one priority. Who's the client? Is the client the city, the county or is the client the person that's making the proposal? They should be working for the city and so it should be accurate. And it, it should have been done correctly. So, I don't wanna go long. You've got the notes in there. There's all the specifics of the individual inaccuracies in the plan. It could be rejected because it was procedurally incorrect. It could be rejected because there was an appearance of bias. It could be rejected because the, the statements that were used and as findings of fact to say that it's consistent were incorrect and inaccurate. And those are right there. They're not disputable. But on top of that, and besides all that, it should be rejected because a PUD for this area is just, it would be setting a dangerous precedent this far away. And in terms of the Growth Management Act, this is not urban growth. It is, it is rural shoreline development. But even in the rural shoreline development and it's a landmire, it's one acre, one acre. So, a PUD allows you to come and undercut that one acre develop, RC one status. And I just think it's inappropriate. It doesn't meet the four designations of safety. It doesn't meet the designation, uh, of, of, um, it doesn't meet the designation of consistency with that area that's around it. Another one of the designation is variety. Um, it doesn't, it's supposed to encourage the development of a viable economic base. Um, and it develop land uses that will be compatible with and complement existing proposed adjacent land uses. So, it could be rejected on every one of these. Now, the SEPA, the SEPA has been submitted, there's a lengthy list on, on the SEPA. It could be rejected. For any of these reasons, this could be rejected and could be sent back. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions. I appreciate your time. Again, I, I am grateful for what you do. I am, this is in no way a disparaging remark against Mr. Harpster or, or Mr. Kelly or the city or the county or anyone else like this. I, I don't believe in that, but this is just a mere statement of facts. This would not be a wise thing to do. We, the residents of the area, are not opposed to development. This is not a just, "We don't like it" thing. Uh, if one acre homes, if there's water for it, one acre homes to go in in that area, please. Um, that would fit the RC one designation. That would be consistent with the surrounding areas. Uh, Mr. Jim Kelly stood up in a meeting to oppose, this was, uh, over twelve years, fourteen years ago, who to oppose the RC one development of the lots where I live. And they formed, Ed Ray formed a concomitant agreement that they would not go below a two point two acre lot. So, even though they could go down to one acre, all of them went two point two. And yet this is directly adjacent to it by the same person. I, I'm just saying that it's, uh, it doesn't make sense. Uh, look anywhere in Grant County, Adams County, Franklin County for this kind of distance and this kind of density. Um, and, and it, it doesn't make a benefit to it. One acre lots, that's great. Go for it if you have the water. Um, thank you very much for your time and I hope I didn't bore you to death.
No.
Thank you.
Not at all. Thank you. Mr. Harpster, Mr. Fickles, as the applicant's representative and counsel, you may proceed with your defense.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, my name is Mark Fickus. Noel in the name, uh, I'm a land use and real estate attorney from Yakima at the Halverson Northwest Law Firm, four oh five East Lincoln Avenue in Yakima, for the record. I'm the applicant's real estate land use counsel, which is Columbia Reach Properties. Um, I have Peter Harpster, the project, uh, engineer and consultant for the applicant here to speak tonight. Both Peter and I made a presentation at the planning commission meeting. We'll try to keep our arguments relatively short and on point. Um, we're here, again, a little bit, you guys have a little bit of a usual process. I've spoke with your county attorney, Mr. Briggs. I think you did a good job trying to consolidate an appeal of a recommendation with a closed record hearing. Uh, by the way, sometime maybe by next year, you need to get rid of the appeals of a recommendation. It shouldn't be appropriate to force either applicants or people that have concerns about developments to appeal an actual recommendation, but that's by the by. Um, I'll speak on the appeal first, this, uh, uh, and I'm gonna make my comments consolidated. I'll speak on the appeal and then make a couple comments on the actual plat and PUD. Mr. Harpster will deal mainly with the approval criteria for the plat and PUD. Uh, again, this is a, this is probably the third PUD. I've been before.
To one, to one speaker?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Or, or no, not one speaker. I, both Pete, Peter and I are gonna speak. I'm, I'm, we, we can, we can both speak as parties to the.
Did you both speak at?
Yeah, yes. We both, we both speak at the plan. We both made a presentation. We're the applicant's representative, so, so.
We both make comments as well.
Yeah, but, uh, here, I'll get into the procedure in a second. Let me start by finishing my introductory remarks. This is a simple, uh, ninety-four lot PUD on seventy-nine acres with, with eleven acres of open spaces. This is the third one before you. I presented, one was Coler Estates Phase Two, about sixty lots, and one was a hundred and twenty-three lots you approved for the Underwood plat. So, there is, you know, it's a little further south. This one is the, the, uh, a development that's in the northernmost part of what attorneys refer to as a limited area of more intense residential development. It's called the Columbia Risk, Columbia River West Lammert, which you or your predecessors in interest are slated for residential development along the Columbia River. Um, it's not limited. You also have a PUD ordinance that, uh, gets, is an overlay zone that gets processed contemporaneously with the, uh, Lammert. Again, the Lammert is an exception to the rural development standards in the comp plan and the PUD overlays that. So, your planning staff, that's the professionals here, both Mr. McCart and your outside land use planners at AHBL, uh, both believe that this project meets all the approval criteria, is consistent with the comp plan and compatible with the area. I'll make, I'll, I'll deal with that in a second. I wanna deal with a couple procedural legal items again. I'll, Mr. Harpster will deal with some of the approval criteria. But on the appeal, there's two procedural area things I'd like to, objections I'd like to make for the record. First, Mr. Hale may have slept at a Holiday Inn last night, but he's not an attorney. He cannot represent other people in a legal, in a legal appeal. Mr., please do not interrupt me, uh, when I'm making a presentation.
Yes, we, please, we'll keep this in order.
Um, but he, they don't have an unincorporated association. All he did was cut and paste signatures that supported his appeal. I have no problem with the comments he made at the planning commission, which were read into the record and the people that spoke, but if the other neighbors wanted to file an appeal, they had a duty to file a separate appeal under the Franklin County ordinance. So, they can't deal with the appeal. Now, the people that spoke can, that have participation standing, can't bring in any new evidence. They can speak for a few minutes on summarizing their comments that they made at the planning commission level, but they can't join in the appeal. Um, the other procedural issue, and again, so, I'm making some of these comments for the record, just in case there's a judicial appeal. This is our one chance to complete the record. The other procedural defect, Mr. Hale raises a bunch of procedural issues with Mr. McCart's SEPA determination. And Franklin County does not allow SEPA appeals of a negative threshold decision, the MDNS. Your ordinance, and again, I've spoken with this with Mr. Briggs, um, not just on this application, but on prior applications, you do not allow SEPA appeals. They're not required by law. Um, you can, you can review it, you can deny it, you can condition it based on the merits of the PUD, but you cannot send this back for additional environmental impact statements or studies under SEPA because your SEPA appeal, you don't have an administrative SEPA appeal ordinance. The only SEPA appeals, I'm reading FCC eighteen oh four, two eight oh A, and it says, "When any non-exempt action not requiring a commissioner's decision, then you can file appeal." There are no SEPA appeals. You could not say, "Mr. McCart, you made a procedural area, you need to go back and redo SEPA." So, the comments, I think they're, I think Mr. Hale's comments are like pages sixteen through eighteen are really not applicable tonight. I, they're, they're already part of the record, so I, I assume they've been reviewed. You can deny, approve, condition the appeal, but you can't do it based on SEPA. That would be illegal and inappropriate. Um, I've read, like Commissioner Bowman, I've read Mr. Hale's narrative and I understand he's not an attorney and usually I don't like to get in arguments with neighbors. I do this for a living, so I get yelled at all the time at hearings up and down from here to the Yakima Valley. But you overwrite, Mr. Bowman, to a point, uh, his statements, even the one tonight, his backhanded apology, these were, this was a sort of an obnoxious filed appeal. He didn't just disagree with the conclusions. I have no problem disagreeing, is this compatible or not? That's a legal conclusion that the planning commission makes based on the record and that you make based on a review of the planning commission. But his entire appeal is attacking the county's own in-house and outside planning staff as incompetent and biased. The planning's commission itself is biased and unfair and basically attacking the applicant's representative, including me and Peter Harpster, as almost liars. Now, a- again, I know this is important to him. These are homeowners, they're protecting their homes. I have no problem with that. But you don't attack the decision maker. And by the way, there is nothing on this record that was done unfairly, in a biased manner, that violates the appearance of fairness doctrine or that would make any procedural defect that would allow you to base, uh, to deny it. In fact, again, a lot of his statements are offensive and they, and they should be. If I did this to a judge, I'd probably be cited for contempt of court. You don't attack the decision maker. You simply present your case, um, based on the facts. And again, uh, I don't think Mr. Hale did a very good job of doing that. But again, he's not an attorney. His primary objection is a simple compatibility argument. And again, this was raised by, uh, at the planning commission level by some of the neighbors and they view, these are people with million dollar homes on two and a half acre lots, complaining about million dollar homes on half acre lots. Okay? Compatibility is not size, is not density. This is high quality residential development next to high quality residential development. As a land use attorney, compatibility is about the use, not the size of the lots. So, this, as your planning staff found, both Nicole Stickney, who is a qualified professional that I've had an opportunity to see make presentations, she is good at what she does, Mr. Pat Kelly did a good job, and Mr. McCart did as well. And everybody in the planning commission unanimously found that this development is in fact compatible. Is it the same size lots as the neighbors? No, it's not. I'm not gonna, you know, blow smoke in the air and say it is, but it certainly is compatible. There's also a large trend to, you know, the, this again is the only area in the county that is suitable for residential du, use that can meet your housing goals under the Growth Management Act. And this is what it was designed for. It's being developed and designed to meet your housing goals and it's consistent, it's compatible for the reasons outlined by your planning staff in the staff report. And, uh, Mr. Harpster will, he'll highlight a few other points. Um, your neighbors, the, the neighbors' comments, uh, seem to challenge a lot of the experts. They seem to, uh, challenge the water availability. Water is avail, this plat, PUD and plat is conditioned on water being available. It will be served by the Richview Water System that has, already has Department of Health District approval. Part of the documents that Mr. Hale complains about that were submitted as part of the record were done in response to an information request from Mr. McCart to show that water is in fact legally available. It is legally available and will be there. If it's not, this plat won't, won't go forward. It won't succeed. Um, again, it's been approved by the Department of Health as a group A water system. Ecology has all the water rights and it is under final stages of construction right now. It will be available or this development won't go. There was comments in this appeal about the adequacy of roadways or safeway. Safety, your public works department approved it. The roads are operating at levels of service, the road approaches are fine. Your experts that you hire to evaluate this stuff have already approved the road system as being safe and having the capacity to deal with the traffic from the development. Uh, you also have a traffic mitigation fee, uh, along Columbia River Road and our client, Columbia Reach Properties, will be contributing to that. In fact, since you have a traffic impact fee, you could not condition and ask for additional money based on SEPA. It only allows the county one shot at the apple. So, the roads, our, our client will be contributing to, uh, future improvements of Columbia River Road and the public roads within the PUD and plat as designed meet all county development standards. Um, again, there, there was concern about fire and police and safety. Uh, again, there was no comments from your fire department or police department. Again, there was no comments from your fire department or police department. Or, they'll, they'll be plenty, uh, of coverage, and this is gonna be a s- high-quality development. Uh, the, the price points of this development are not much below the neighbors that are complaining about the development. I understand they wanna, you know, a lot of people would love to look at a cherry orchard for the rest of their lives, but, but the way this is set up, this development meets all the legal standards for a PUD and platte in the county. Again, I've already hit, uh, this, but your planning staff, both inside and housing out, and the Planning Commission unanimously found that it met the four criteria, including compatibility. I understand reasonable people can disagree on that, but this property is going to be allowed to develop with a Group A system. It can go with smaller lots with your overlay PUD ordinance that allows a density bonus for providing some park space, similar to Coler Estates that's already built, and Underwood that's gonna start construction. This will be a high-quality project, uh, that meets all development criteria. Uh, the appeal should be summarily denied, um, and the PUD should be approved. Just real... Just wanna make a couple other... Okay, I've already dealt with the SEPA again. The SEPA is really almost irrelevant to this present proceeding. Uh, it can only be appealed, the threshold decision can only be appealed to court with a decision on the merits. With it, it can't be, there is no SEPA appeal to this body tonight. Again, I'll, think I'll give the floor to Mr. Harpster, but the appeal should be denied. The platte and PUD should be approved. This is not materially different than the other platte and PUDs that are approved, other than I will, it's not a leapfrog development. It just happens to be in the northern end of the Lammard, the Columbia Ri- Columbia River West Lammard that this body approved for residential development. So unless any, any other legal questions come up, I'll give the floor to Mr. Harpster.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Baumann.
I had a couple of questions. Um, Jeff, if you could help me out with this. Mr. Fickus identified that Mr. Hale cannot represent other people. I am unfamiliar with that, that you have to be a lawyer in order to represent other people. Could you speak to that? He said he was here on behalf of a homeowners' association, um, having been a president of an HOA before. I s- I am not a lawyer, and I spoke, um, on behalf of that HOA when, when I was the president of that HOA, so I'm unfamiliar with having to be a lawyer in order to represent people.
Right. I, I think we're getting into the weeds a little bit in, in, in terms of being a lawyer versus being an agent. Uh, you, you can be an agent of an organization without being a lawyer, which just means you can, you have authority to bind the principal or the entity. But what, what we're talking about here is this is an adjudicative proceeding before a quasi-judicial body. And so you're getting real close at that point to practicing law if you're, if you're appearing and advocating. But, um, I, I'm not the bar association either, so I'm not here to police that. Um, I, I, I would be more inclined to give people the due process rights to present, to, so, so they can be heard at a hearing. And, and what I was looking at specifically on this, and while I was kinda trying to thread the needle here, is we, we've sorta got two proceedings going on. We've got an appeal, but then we also have a platte application as well as a PUD, so I guess maybe three. Um, but with, with the platte application under Franklin County Code sixteen twenty zero eight zero, subparagraph C, it does allow the board to ask questions of persons in attendance and allow them to basically provide public comment.
Thank, thank you for that. Um, Mr. Chairman, I would like to hear from the, from the gentleman here that was a, a part of the appeal process. I would like to hear from them, and I would like to hear from Mr. Harpster. So not just a single individual from the, from either side.
And we're gonna have this back and forth between the, the, uh, both parties.
And I am totally fine with it, just not on the appeal. The appeal is a function of your ordinance. Could, one person can't appeal for thirty people. If the appellant had been an incorporated HOA, it'd be closer. I have no problem with Mr. Hale and speaking for the neighborhood at the Planning Commission hearing, which he did, and attached the same signatures. I'm just saying, when you file a formal appeal and have to pay two hundred dollars, you don't get a pay. Everybody that wants to appeal has to file their own. You ca- you ca- you can't join in that. I mean, and whether it's the practice of law, I don't care. That, that, that's not a big deal. I have no problem with anybody that spoke at the Planning Commission hearing speaking after Mr. Harpster makes his presentation on the closed-record platte and PUD. That's appropriate. As long as no new evidence is brought in. Thank you.
Well, after we hear from the appellant, and Mr. Harpster, if you would please come to the mic, then we're gonna go back, and we'll ha- let you speak at that time.
Good evening, Commissioners. Peter Harpster, Harpster Land Development. Uh, address is five eight zero four, Road ninety, Suite C, here in Pasco. Mr. Fickus took some of the words out of my mouth, so what's, uh, instead of repeating for the sake of time, I'll, I'll simply just move on to my next point in my notes. As Mr. Fickus said, much of what was included in the appeal packet is either incorrect or irrelevant to the matter that's before you today, uh, but I, I will address a few just for clarity's sake. One thing that I'll note is on, on page three of the appeal narrative, uh, paragraph two, the appellant states, "This appeal is for Cherrywood Estates PUD and the associated SEPA declaration of nonsignificance." Now, that, that nomenclature of declaration is incorrect. It's actually called a determination of nonsignificance. And while it may seem petty for me to bring that up, I bring it up because it's simply just a mistake the appellant made when they submitted their form. Same as there were, uh, perhaps some mistakes made on the SEPA checklist. Those were not intentional, and they were immaterial. And so to call them intentional, immaterial, or, uh, dishonest is, um, uh, not the truth. Mistakes happen. Of course, we regret mistakes. Those mistakes were corrected by planning staff, whether at the county or HBL that added notes. Uh, if you look at a SEPA register for projects across the state, that's a typical practice. If there's, um, scrutiny errors or things like that, th- those are updated by the, uh, the agency and the SEPA responsible official. Page three, paragraph six, uh, the appeal packet is twenty-three pages long. However, nine of those pages are signatures, which are worth noting that those were, those signatures are from a, an appeal that was attempted to be filed in May and was rejected by the county. Many of those signatures, signatures, excuse me, are from people who did not speak during public comment at the Planning Commission meeting, uh, nor submitted comments in writing. Page three, paragraph seven, states that, "We are property owners adjacent to or near the proposed PUD and therefore have standing. Um, however, simply living near a proposed project does not give an individual standing." And then, um, same page, paragraph nine. This has been talked about, but it, it says, "Staff and contractors provided biased, misleading, false, and inaccurate information that presents the appearance of unfairness in favor of the developer." Uh, this is just categorically incorrect. Uh, as has been stated, county planning staff and HBL planning staff have decades of experience. If one was to submit a public records request, I'm sure there's a, a litany of emails between, uh, myself as the applicant representative and staff arguing different points. Uh, so there was, there was no special treatment. Um, there's a mention that this application was pushed through. Uh, this application actually, from submittal to public hearing, was five months. It's typically around three months. As we all know, there's been some changeover in staffing. And so, um, there's probably in the, if, again, if an individual was to file a public records request, I'm, I'm sure there's requests from me to Mr. McCart for updates on, you know, where we're at on this. Uh, and so I, I can assure you, nothing was rushed through. Again, there was, you know, a good reason for it taking five months. I'm not saying that, uh, staff was intentionally slow by any means. The appellant states that a determination should not have been made based on the information provided on the SEPA checklist as it was incomplete, procedurally incorrect, and done showing bias to push a project through with Wes McCart's signature on May eighth, coming eight days before the signature by the Health Department approval. Um, this is simply a misunderstanding of process and procedure, uh, in land development applications by the appellant. When a land use application such as this one is filed, uh, staff will issue a determination and then simultaneously submit the application to the SEPA register, uh, for review by agencies, which was the letter submitted by the Ben Franklin Health District that was signed by a representative from there. That letter did not constitute approval. Uh, it was simply their comment letter. Once all those comment letters are received from the various agencies, the SEPA responsible official, Mr. McCart in this case, has the option to change or leave the DNS as is. In this case, it was left, um, as is, determination of nonsignificance. Uh, the appellant mentioned the three hundred and ninety pages of information regarding the water project. Uh, he states that it was withheld. Wasn't withheld. It's not even required. Uh, that's a separate application that's long been approved and is separate from this project. It was submitted, as Mr. Fickus stated, at Mr. McCart's request, just to provide supplementary information. Uh, but again, the, different application. So the idea that we submitted those pages to, uh, drown the appellant in lots of information to review is, um, inaccurate. The appellant who wanted it in the first place, and we were happy to provide it. The statement that opposing comments were cut short is untrue. In fact, as many of us remember, we sat in here for, I think it was two hours total, an hour and fifteen minutes of which or so was spent listening to in-person testimony as well as emailed testimony that was read into the record, uh, by Mr. McCart. Then the, uh, statement that this PUD is farther out from a city than any of the two previous PUDs, that's, that's true, and it's also just, uh, irrelevant, uh, to your decision-making tonight. Again, as Mr. Fickus stated, the proposed project is within the rural shoreline development area, a Lammard that is intended for more intense rural development. Uh, the appellant also states, and I think this is something we agree on, that the commissioner should consider actual facts and use wisdom and reason in considering this propos- this proposal. And, uh, we agree. The facts are that a PUD can only be approved if it meets the four criteria items found in Franklin County Code. Uh, your staff, uh, agrees that we have met all four of those criteria items. We've belabored them before, so I won't read every single one. But, uh, the Planning Commission unanimously agreed that we met all of them, uh, as well as your staff. Not just your staff, but the, the county side, but also your contractors at HBL. And then, uh, I was gonna speak to the, uh, consistency and compatibility. Mr. Fickus did a good job of that. Again, it's, it's simply, is, is this area designated for residential development? And are we proposing residential development? Um, that, that, that's all that is. A comment that a previous city planner working on this disagreed and was removed is so completely incorrect, but I'll speak to it. He was a county planner, not a city planner. Worked for the county for, I think, less than two years. Uh, he quit to go work for the city of Richland. He provided comments that, uh, HBL corrected. Most of his comments were incorrect. And, um, as we found out, he has, uh, his family owns property next door to this project. Um, but he was not removed from the project because he thought there were safety concerns. He simply quit. And, um, that, that's the only story there. The appellant states that HBL should be reprimanded for lack of integrity, yet cites no examples of deceit or lies. HBL note does comprehensive plans and, uh, land use planning services for several jurisdictions in the state. Uh, Franklin County just happens to be one of them. Uh, the statement that Mr. Baumann asked about that Natasha Mendonca's comments were not included is absolutely false. Her testimony was, uh, emailed in, provided as part of the packet, and additionally read into the record word for word by Mr. McCart. She was present at the Planning Commission meeting and was given opportunity to provide more comments orally. Uh, and then the statement that multiple documents were not submitted for review by the public and has the appearance of unfairness, uh, is also not true. All documents associated with the application before you today were submitted on time with the application that was filed, uh, earlier this year. Again, those water documents, uh, are not required. Uh, they were requested by staff, and, uh, we had no reason to not provide them at their request. And so, again, we were happy to do that. Addressing just a couple comments that the appellant made this evening. Uh, the largest PUD in Franklin County, that, it's irrelevant, but it's also incorrect. A recent PUD was approved by this board at one hundred and twenty-three lots. Uh, the comment that this is unprecedented is accurate. Uh, planned unit developments, according to Franklin County Code, are supposed to be unique. And they, uh, as we've discussed before, provide opportunities for increased housing supply, of which the county, uh, is in desperate need of. And even with adding a PUD of this size, the county still is gonna drastically fall short of its housing goals. And so this is, uh, just a, a small piece to be able to get there. Again, the, the rural shoreline development area is along the river. It's kind of, looks like that long, kinda skinny rectangle. And, uh, that's the only area in the entirety of Franklin County where a PUD would be acceptable. And, uh, and so it's important, I think, that, uh, uh, this board take advantage of opportunities like that to be able to increase housing supply and increase the tax base, uh, of the county. Again, the, uh, the one thing I said at the Planning Commission meeting that I'll say tonight is, uh, I empathize with the neighbors who are not experienced land use planners, and, uh, their concerns to some extent are legitimate. However, the, the process to, uh, recognize and respond to those concerns is what is going on, uh, here. The application was submitted to several different agencies for their review and comment. Those comments are all then compiled, and, uh, uh, staff then creates conditions of approval to mitigate those concerns. So picking back up at the project, uh, again, the, uh, discussed a lot of this already. As far as, uh, what's in the staff report, we have no objections, uh, to anything we're willing to accept. Staff report as is, uh, agency comments, findings of fact, conclusions of law, uh, as well as the conditions of approval as presented. We just asked that you consider the unanimous Planning Commission recommendation, uh, the precedent that has already been set, and, uh, staff's recommendation, and vote to reject the appeal and, uh, approve the project application that is before you today. Thanks for your time.
Okay, so at this time, uh, Mr. Hale's, would you like to come forward? And after you're done, we would like to hear, hear from Mr. Hale.
Thank you. I appreciate the time.
And I'd like to apologize, Mr. Fickus, for pronouncing your name wrong.
And Hale's has an S. But, uh, I would just like to begin, I, I don't claim to be a lawyer, and the reason I dress the way that I dress, if you're judging me to be a lawyer by the way that I dress, is because I respect government. And every one of these men and women dress well when they come here, and I, I felt like I could do at least the same. So I appreciate what you do. But, uh, I noticed one thing. I, I will not disparage another person's reputation or what they say, but I hope that you would see a pattern, uh, in Mr. Fickus. What he has done is to try to, um, defame every person, whether it was in the, the previous hearing or in this one. And he made that attempt to, to defame or to disqualify the things that were said. The things that I said and the things that I represent in this thing are accurate. Now, if you want to go through the errors, yeah, maybe this, the score is probably one to thirty, or two to thirty. Yeah, we made errors, and, but the number of errors in the, the, where they're a professional and I'm not. The, I feel to trust and hope that our government and our, our, um, even the contractors that are employed are of a high quality. Um, I would like to address specifically some of the things that were said, uh, about me and others. Uh, and I, I do not mean to defame, and I, I, I'm sorry that, uh, somebody felt like that was an attack on people. I don't know how to state that were significant errors made, that if a person were to make those kind of errors in a school class, they would be, they would be graded upon those errors. And so I'm grading the work rather than an individual or their character to that one. The, the, the claim that those people who are living near have no standing. The, the wording in that is to say that we have, um, significant, uh, reason and, and concern to be able to appeal this. And we have a legal reason to, a legal, um, ability to... And we have a legal reason to, a legal ability to appeal. I am from this county, as opposed to some of the other people who are not there. The appearance of unfairness. If I made that many mistakes, and then it just got rubber stamped almost, it appeared like those who were on the panel in the planning commission just rubber stamped any approval without really looking at it. I do not believe that every member of that planning commission read every page of that proposal, of any of those. And so, it's an appearance to me that it was pushed through. That's the wording and a clarification upon that, that they didn't, they didn't read it all. So, what we in this appeal are doing is we're asking you, who have read through this and who have considered this, to look at what's been done. Look at what was done by and was presented, look at the information that was there, and make your judgment. We trust that judgment. He said, he stated and started bringing up safety about this, this member of the county planning commission who testified, and he mentioned about the green space that is being given us right along the canal. And in his testimony, he stated that he suggested that it was not safe. And so, that is what I'm referring to. He presented some concerns, and he felt that they were brushed off. That was his testimony as he went through there. He was, that was the statement of the planner. So, the argument by Mr. Peter Harpster was said that this is the largest PUD. It is the largest PUD of this distance. That is exactly what I said. The nearest PUD is that, is about two to three miles south of this. So, it would be the large, although that other Underwood PUD is a hundred and twenty-three or whatever homes, also, they're third, they're point seven-five acre lots. They're not half-acre lots. And this is significantly farther from city areas. So, it is the largest PUD of this distance. That is a correct statement. And it can be inconsistent. It can be leapfrogging. The Growth Management Act does apply, even though this is rural shoreline development, as has been stated. The Urban Growth Act still applies. The idea of this is falling short of housing goals. As commissioners, you are not subject to anything that the state tries to impose upon you. You are elected individuals, and you make decisions based upon the people that you represent that are here. And so, you're not adherent to any kind of housing goals of the state. And the fact, the claim that this was the only place where a PUD is acceptable, then move it closer. Move it closer to the city. I am grateful for your time, and I'm grateful for you listening. I would ask that you consider these carefully. It, it is a change. I would hope that you would recognize the RC1 designation, which has been established in our county for decades, did or does carry weight for people as they go and make a decision out there. They believe that that will be upheld and not undermined and had something that undercut it. And we also believe that, as in the representation of these people, that their voice would like to be heard. The reason why they didn't all speak is because we were trying to be, the reason why they submitted those signatures is we were trying to be aware of people's time and not be redundant, and also recognizing that there are some people that get quite inflamed about this and trying to be a little more civil about it. But we're grateful, and we, we stand by what the decision will be. Thank you.
I believe, Mr. Hoyle's?
No S.
No S? Hoyle. I'm getting it all wrong tonight.
Well, my name is Ed Hoyle, and I live on Geesler Road, just actually adjacent to the proposal. And this whole thing has really upset me, because although I've been, I and others have been referred to as just a local citizen that don't know anything, that kind of offended me, as I mentioned in the planning commission meeting, because I'm a, I'm a retired civil engineer, county engineer, public works director, and county administrator, thirty years. So, this is not a new thing. And I'm the one that put together many of those comments about the SEPA checklist. Now, they keep saying we can't do anything about SEPA checklist. You guys, as a board of county commissioners, are faced with a decision whether you approve or deny this. Yeah, there's various reasons of which you can deny it. And I'm just going to show you one thing. One of the documents you have was a, let me back up just a minute. When I requested a copy of everything the planning department had on this, I received the ninety-page document on water. I think they called it the Water Availability Report, or something very similar to that. As you read that, it was, it was merely a granting of shifting of water rights. And specifically in that water rights, it says that these water rights can be used for only these parcels, listed them off, parcels, parcels, parcels. Cherrywood Estates was not in that. So, the document that I was provided to compare or look at the SEPA checklist didn't apply to this at all. And that ninety-page document that you have, if you have it in there, that's just a ninety-page. I hear, I understand now there is a three hundred and some page water document. But what was presented for the SEPA checklist, if that's what, that's what I was told was done, then that was misrepresentation. And if you look at Washington Administrative Code 197-11-340, parentheses three, parentheses A, when a misrepresentation or lack of material disclosures were pointed, were, are disclosed, the lead agency shall withdraw the DNS.
Would you please recite that RCW?
It's not RCW, it's Washington Administrative Code.
Go ahead.
Sir, could I get your name for the record?
That's Ed Hoyle.
What's that?
Ed Hoyle, and I did give that.
Ed Hoyle, okay, very, I have a problem hearing. Very good. And the other part is, and I would, I would yield to the, we can't accept new evidence on this, so just be very careful about that.
That's not new evidence.
This isn't evidence, it's a Washington Administrative Code.
Yes, and I take it, Mr. Briggs, that you're writing that down to research?
I'm, I'm reading it right now on my computer, I typed it in.
There you go. Continue, Mr. Hoyle.
Would you please reread the RCW that you cited?
It's, it's not an RCW, it's a Washington Administrative Code.
WAC.
Yeah, WAC. And that's 197-11-340, parentheses three, parentheses A.
Thank you.
Okay, that's one item. And if you look at those lists of what I provided of those little items, it was, I'd say misleading. They were not false in all cases, but they were definitely misleading. I'm not going to go through all of the things I had written down here. But the way you read the findings of fact, the terminology is such that they are promoting, well, it reads like it's a promotional document for the subdivision, is what it reads like. Simple things like, they talk about it's residential, and that there's houses next to it, it's all developed. They don't mention anything about the five-acre parcels, the twenty-acre parcels, the farmland, and it's continual, this is compatible. And I'm only going to summarize just a little bit more. That they continue, continued to say that it's, I'll find the right thing. This is the fourth of many items, but the staff report misled the planning commission by saying on page four, quote, "Staff find the development will be consistent," end quote, with the comp plan. Page four, the staff report reads like a promotional, a proposed, reads like a proposal promotional, instead of providing the planning commission with the facts. For example, quote, "Staff concurs again with the applicant that the proposed development ensures proper transition between the PUD and nearby external uses," end quote. Now, I don't know who really thought that up, but a cement block wall is not a transition between half-acre lots and at least two-acre lots, five-acre lots, twenty-acre lots, agricultural land. Cement block wall is not a transition for that. Yet, what was presented to the planning commission is it's all transitional, that's a good transition. That's just not fact. And it talked about being consistent and compatible. Nowhere tonight, or in that planning commission meeting, did I ever hear them address the issue that it's supposed to be compatible and complementary to the existing land uses. It's not complementary. It's not complementing to the adjacent landowners, to the adjacent land developments. You have grounds to deny this. Another thing they keep talking about, the Lamirds, the L-A-M-I-R-D-E-S, or whatever it is, Lamirds, that grants you to development, high-density development. You read it, what it says is, Lamirds were developed around some of these areas of years ago, I was thinking the nineteen-seventies, that before some of the subdivision laws came into effect, before they were adopted, you could divide land without a bunch of restrictions. So, they went out and developed these, just, okay, piece of paper. It's now twenty-acre subdivision or a ten-acre subdivision. Okay, that's what happened in many cases, and I'm sure that's what some of these areas are here. You've got a little, off of Birch Roaders One, different areas in the county. So, these Lamirds were created so to allow in-building, to fill those in. That's what Lamirds were for. You, you, that's what it says in your ordinance. It also says they can be filled in with lots and parcels as small as one acre, not half-acre. So, there's just so many things with this. I wasn't going to say it, but obviously, I've seen a few of these before. I have only seen one proposal that was worse than this. That individual ended up on probation with the state licensing. And I don't think I've got anything else to say, but this, you have the right. In fact, we require, we really ask you to deny this. Let them apply that will fit something that, that is within the comp plan. If you approve this, you might as well sort the comp plan out. Because they're saying compatible is because there's another residence there. Have you ever thought about that residence that sits on one of your circles out there? The one on the corner? That's a residence. I guess you can divide yours a circle. Half the acre lots.
So, at this time, Mr. Fickers, do you have any rebuttal? We keep going, all right, well, I'm, Mr. McCart, do you have something to add?
Yes, sir, I have my entire presentation.
Fantastic.
If I may. So, for the record, Wes McCart, Franklin County Planning and Building Department Director. So, sir, that was a presentation. I'm addressing the appeal. Thank you very much. For the record, I, I have a couple of clarifications I'd like to start out with before I read my prepared statement. I did make a comment to Mr. Hales that I do review all documents. However, I prefaced that with that, that I review them, I do not process them. So, when you review something, you don't necessarily look at every fine detail of every word on every page. I look to see if it's reasonable and if it makes sense. And in some cases, if it doesn't look reasonable, I do my due diligence to get into the detail to make sure that that detail is one hundred percent correct. So, I take great offense to, and having been a county commissioner for twelve years, I got a pretty thick skin, but I got to tell you, I'm a little, I'm a little upset over the accusations that we were unprofessional and didn't process right. HBL was the client of the county. So, I'll get into the prepared statement now. So, standards of review. A prepared unit development is a combination subdivision and rezone. I'll speak to the subdivision first, and this is standards of review. State standard, RCW 5817-110 sub two. Approval or disapproval of subdivision dedication, factors to be considered, conditions for approval. In relative part states, a proposed subdivision and dedication shall not be approved unless the city, town, or county legislative body makes written findings that, A, appropriate provisions are made for the public health, safety, and general welfare, and for such open spaces, drainage ways, streets, roads, alleys, other public ways, transit stops, potable water supplies, sanitary wastes, parks and recreation, playgrounds, schools and school grounds, and all other relevant facts, including sidewalks and other planning features that assure safe walking conditions for students who only walk to and from school. And B, the public use and interest will be served by the plating of such subdivision and dedication. If it finds a proposed subdivision and dedication makes such appropriate provisions that the public use and interest will be served, then the legislative body shall approve the proposed subdivision and dedication. Dedications of land to any public body provision of public improvements to serve the subdivision and/or impact fees imposed under RCW 8202050 through 090 may be required as a condition of subdivision approval. Dedication shall be clearly shown on the final plat. The legislative body shall not condition to approval any subdivision require a lease from damages to the procure from other property owners. County standards, Franklin County Code 1620070, findings of fact and recommendation conditions of approval. Upon conclusion of the public hearing, the planning commission shall make and enter into, into findings from the record and conclusions thereof as whether or not, one, adequate provisions are made for public health, safety, general welfare, and the open spaces, drainage ways, stormwater retention and detention, roads, alleys, sidewalks, and other public ways, portable water supplies, sanitary waste, parks, playgrounds and recreation, and other public needs. The proposed subdivision constitutes, contributes to the orderly development and land use pattern of the area and assures the safe walking for students. Three, the public use and interest will be served by permitting the proposed subdivision. The proposed subdivision conforms to the general purposes of any applicable policies or plans which have been adopted by the Board of County Commissioners, including but not limited to the comprehensive plan and its resource land designations, critical area protections, zoning requirements, and zoning overlays. And five, the proposed subdivision conforms to the comprehensive plan zoning, plan and zoning requirements. Six, the proposed subdivision conforms to the general purposes of the chapter. Upon conclusion of the public hearing, the planning commission shall make and enter into recommended conditions of approval necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the property users, consistency with the comprehensive plan and development code, appropriate provisions for factors enumerated in RCW 5817-110, and the mitigation of probable adverse environmental impacts, both within and adjacent to property to be subdivided, such as, but not limited to, one, relocation of lots, streets, sidewalks, pedestrian, walkways, and utility easements or other plat features; two, regulation of lot sizes; three, regulation of street width; four, dedication improvements of public access of public parks, playgrounds, open spaces, schools; the five, the county 5) The county review of maintenance agreements, any restrictive covenants, the homeowners association and bylaws. 6) Other conditions that will make possible the development in an orderly and efficient manner and in conformity with this code and a comprehensive plan. All factors listed above these two criteria are to be considered by the commissioners by a preponderance of substantial evidence and record. You will find that all of these items list, list from the law and code are in the record and have been reviewed. Further, they have been considered in the recommendation from the planning commission as per the written recommendation in front of you. This includes staff report, applicant's information, and all public testimony. We specifically followed the development codes. In front of the board tonight is addressed FCC sixteen twenty oh-eight oh, Board of County Commissioners Consideration. Unless a proper and timely appeal is filed in the Board of County Commissioners by majority vote deemed further review is necessary, the recommendation of the planning commission shall be affected by proper action by the Board of County Commissioners without further review. And B) In the event the Board of Commissioners deems further review is necessary, it should conduct a closed record appeal, notice of what should be given in accordance with Section sixteen twenty oh-five oh of this title. Prior to the closed record appeal, the Board of County Commissioners will review the meeting record from the planning commission's open record hearing. At the closed record appeal, the Board of County Commissioners may ask questions of person in attendance based upon the planning commission's meeting record. The planning commission's meeting record shall be the basis for any decision as it relates to questions asked by the county commissioners and response by attending public or applicant. New testimony or testimony that has, was not deemed part of the planning commission's meeting record will not be permitted or considered by the county commissioners. D) The Board of County Commissioners at the conclusion of the closed record appeal shall make and enter findings of fact following the review criteria within Section sixteen twenty oh-seven oh of this chapter and take one of the following actions. Approve the preliminary long plat with or without conditions, or 2) Deny the preliminary long plat. Appeals. RCW thirty-six seventy B oh-three oh, project review. Required elements, limitations. 1. Fundamental land use planning choices may be adopt, made in the adopted comprehensive plan and development regulations shall serve as the foundation for project review. The review of a project's proposed project consistency with applicable development regulations, or in the absence of the applicable regulations, the adopted comprehensive plan under RCW thirty-six seventy B oh-four oh shall incorporate determinations under this section. During project review, a local government or any subsequent reviewing body shall determine whether the list, items listed in this subsection are defined in the development regulations applicable to the proposed project, or in the absence of the applicable regulations, the adopted comprehensive plan. At minimum, such applicable regulations or plan shall be determinative of the, of the A) Type of land use permitted at the site, including uses that may be allowed under certain circumstances, such as a planned unit development and conditional or special uses if the criteria for the approval has been satisfied. B) Density of residential development in urban growth areas. C) Availability and adequacy of public facilities identified in the comprehensive plan if the plan or development regulations provide for funding of these facilities as required by Chapter thirty-six seventy A RCW. During project review, the local government and any subsequent reviewing body shall not reexamine alternatives to or hear appeals on the items identified in subsection two of this section except for issues of code interpretation. As part of the project review process, a local government shall provide a procedure for obtaining a code interpretation as provided in RCW thirty-six seventy B one-ten. 4) Pursuant to RCW forty-three twenty-one C two-forty, a local government may determine that the requirements for environmental analysis and mitigation measures in development regulations and other applicable laws provide adequate mitigation for some or all of the project's specific adverse environmental impacts to which the requirements apply. 5) Nothing in this section limits the authority of the permitting agency to approve, condition, or deny a project as provided in development regulations, adopted under Chapter thirty-six seventy A RCW, and in its policies adopted under forty-three twenty-one C oh-six oh. Project review shall be used to identify specific project design and conditions relating to the character development, character of development, such as details of site plans, curb cuts, drainage swales, transportation demand management, the payment of impact fees, and other measures to mitigate the proposal's probable adverse environmental impacts, if applicable. 6) Subsections one through four of this section apply only to local government planning under thirty-six seventy A oh-four oh, which Franklin County does. Development regulations are the only thing we look to unless they are silent. Then we go to the comprehensive plan. The Board of County Commissioners cannot consider the comprehensive plan if the development regulations do not specify. No argument is valid to try and re-argue the comprehensive plan or our development regulations at this point in time on a project. Comprehensive plan. This proposal is consistent with our comprehensive plan. Where the development regulations guide in the review, there are three pertinent sections of our development code read above that apply or refer to the comprehensive plan. Franklin County Code sixteen twenty oh-seven oh, subsections A, four, five, and B, six. I'll hit each one of these individually. Subsection four A. The proposed subdivision conforms to the general purposes of any applicable policies or plans which have been adopted by the Board of County Commissioners, including but not limited to, and I emphasize, "The comprehensive plan and its resource land designations, critical area protections, and zoning requirements, including zoning overlays." That is a direct quote. There are no resource lands within the proposed development. We reviewed the proposal for critical areas, and none of the lots will be in a critical area. As a matter of fact, the only critical area is a slight slope on the west end of the open space number three designated on the plat, preliminary plat. That's the southwest corner of the property. And as for zoning and zoning overlays, this proposal is an RC one zone and the Columbia River West limited area of more intense rural development or lammard overlay. Subsection five, A five states, "The proposed subdivision conforms to the comprehensive plan and zoning requirements." That's a direct quote. This proposal is a planned unit development, or PUD, and as such, a rezone consistent with the policies allowing for planned unit developments, sorted by, supported by Land Use Gold Six Policy One, and spelled out in development code, Franklin County Code seventeen fifty-eight. Subsection B six states, "Other conditions that will make possible the development in an orderly or efficient manner are in conformity with this code and the comprehensive plan." This proposal recommends six conditions related to SEPA and ten additional conditions. Those were the recommended conditions so that we were consistent with our comprehensive plan where we were told to do that by our development regulations. The Columbia River lammard, West lammard on page forty-two and page forty-nine spells out that the infill at the maximum unit residential density of one dwelling unit per acre, or one, excuse me, resident, unit residential density of one dwelling per acre. Key words here, and these are out of the comp plan, are residential and density. This proposal is residential, therefore consistent with that part of the comprehensive plan. Further, the word is density, which does not equal lot size. The meaning of this statement in the comprehensive plan is that the overall density of the lammard shall not exceed the density requirement, but it does not specify a lot size. The only lot size requirement is consistent with the built environment of the overlay, but that the development code requirement, not a comprehensive plan requirement. PUD review. PUD review is guided by Franklin County Code seventeen fifty-eight oh-nine oh, Procedure for Approval of Planning Unit Developments, subsection E. Public hearing before the planning commission. Following the public hearing, the plan commission may recommend approval or denial of the application and the accompanying PUD plans, or may recommend imposition of such conditions of approval as are necessary to ensure conformity with all applicable regulations and purposes of the PUD district. The PUD may recommend for approval only when it is deemed determined that: 1) The PUD district will be compatible with nearby development and uses. What I've just read is direct quoted out of our code. Now for my comment to support number one. This proposed development is approximately point three-five miles from a point zero, four, five acre lot, and less than two tenths of a mile from the proposal in the River Ridge Estates development, where there are approximately, approximately ten lots of about one-half acre in size, varying in size from zero-point-four-five to zero-point-five-seven gross acres. These are residential lots. These acreages were taken off our GIS, GIS system, not the assessor's website, and depict accurate gross acreages. Further, these are second and third tier lots from the river. This example alone shows compatibility or consistency with nearby development in the lammard. Percentage of homes is not a valid, is not valid in showing compatibility or consistency. Double I of the code. Number two. Peripheral treatment ensures proper transition between PUD uses and nearby external uses and developments. This is, this particular item in the appeal was not in dispute, but it was reviewed, and there are proper transitions. Part of that is transitioning that was set up in the comprehensive plan and development regulations that resulted in the zoning that's there. We have transitions from the lammard to resource lands. Number three, again, out of the code. The development will be consistent with the comprehensive plan and the purposes of the PUD district. Land Use Policy Gold Six Policy One, "Provide density incentives and bonuses to reward projects which treat environmental features sensitively, include parks, other public and private open space, and interconnected pathways, are designated to promote security and safety within neighborhood and community contexts, utilize other design features to enhance the quality of life for residents and the larger neighborhood." Now my comment on this. Gold Six Policy One supports PUDs. The development proposal is in a lammard that has been in existence since two thousand, at least two thousand and five, as can be seen in the old two thousand and five comprehensive land use map. One of the main purposes of the PUD is to allow for open space, for the enjoyment, separation of developments, wildlife corridors, et cetera. So the proposal satisfies this requirement in the code. Fourth, out of the code, "The public health, safety, and welfare shall be served." My comment. Environmental concerns, critical areas, level of service maintained on Columbia River Road, adequate access for fires or emergencies have been provided. Water and septicage have been addressed as conditions of final plat approval. Have all the issues of public health and safety and welfare been addressed? Yes. The standard review should be kept in mind, not some other proposal. In conclusion, on all of these issues, all of the conditions for the PUD proposal have been met in the recommendation of the planning commission. SEPA. RCW forty-three twenty-one C oh-one oh, SEPA purposes states, "The purposes of SEPA which all surround harmony, which all surround harmony between humans and the environment, and to protect damage to the environment." Those are the goals that are specified in that RCW. RCW forty-three twenty-one C oh-three-one, two significant impacts. An environmental impact statement is required to analyze only those probable adverse environmental impacts which are significant. Appellant fails to point out any significant environmental impact. RCW forty-three twenty-one C oh-nine oh, Decision of Governmental Agency to be accorded substantial weight. In any action involving an attack on the termination of governmental agency relative to the requirement or the absence of the requirement, or the adequacy of a detailed statement, the decision of the governmental agency shall be accorded substantial weight. In other words, I do not have the burden of proof. Franklin County Code eighteen point oh-four one-thirty B and C, in relevant parts state that the SEPA checklist is to be filled out by the applicant unless: 1) Technical information the applicant doesn't have. Or 2) Applicant has provided inaccurate information. So part of the quote that was given earlier, but WAC one ninety-seven eleven three forty, three A, I through triple I, three A. The agency, the lead agency shall withdraw the determination of non-significance, or DNS, if: 1) There is substantial changes to the proposal so that the proposal is likely to have significant adverse environmental impacts. 2) There is significant new information indicating or on the proposal probably, probable significant adverse environmental impacts. Or 3) The DNS was procured by misrepresentation or lack of material disclosure. If such DNS resulted from the action of an applicant, a subsequent environmental checklist on the proposal shall be prepared directly by the lead agency or consultant at the expense of the applicant. Those are the code. Although the applicant points out several instances where he feels the SEPA checklist is inadequate, a misrepresentation, or lack of material disclosure, he fails to point out any significant adverse environmental impact. Based on the appellant's comments, there are no new impacts that would cause any additional mitigation measures to be added and/or an EIS generated to consider alternatives. Based on the comments given, the DNS with the exact same mitigation measures would be reissued.
Can I, can I step in there, Wes, for a second? I, I just want to make, so the record's clear here, this is not a SEPA appeal. I think Mr. Fickus's point is well taken on that, that, and I agree with him as he stated, that the county doesn't have an administrative process for SEPA appeals. So we are only on today for the appeal of the recommendation of the planning commission for the, where they recommended approval of the PUD and the subdivision, which is on for preliminary plat approval. We, the issue of whether or not the SEPA, now, that, that WAC that was cited, that could, that, that basically gives Wes the authority to remand, basically on his own, if he wants to remand it back, but it doesn't give the board that authority to step in and overstep your, your judgment on that. I just, I just want to make sure we're clear about what's being decided and what isn't.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So, issues on the appeal. So I took the appellant's appeal, where he laid out what his different issues are, and I'll read each one, and I will address each one. Staff and contractors from AHBL on both SEPA and the PUD proposal provided bias, misleading faults and inaccurate information that presents the appearance of unfairness in favor of the developer and skews the judgments of the planning commission. Appearance of fairness doctrine, RCW forty-two thirty-six applies to disqualification of a planning commission member or a county commissioner's ability to participate in a quasi-judicial hearing. One member of the P, planning commission did recuse himself, and after the question was posed at the planning hearing, no one came forward to bring any issues as to why any member of the planning commission should recuse themselves. Second item, proper procedures and level of accuracy and Second item, proper procedures and level of accuracy and professionalism were not followed throughout this process and its recommendation. There are several items, uh, identified as inaccurate throughout this process by the public and the appellant. However, most are not true. For example, the distance from, to the city, Pasco City limits based on GIS is 3.492 miles and was accurately represented as 3.5 miles. We do not use Google Maps or go down the road system as was presented in the appeal.
Was, was that in the record?
That was in the record that, uh, that was 3.5 miles.
Okay.
And that was presented in his appeal, that it was 5.1, that it was inaccurate. The lammard was correctly identified in the 2005 comprehensive land use map as stated by SAF. I could go on, but I'll stop there. Part of the complaint, a determination should be made based on the information provided on the SEPA checklist as it was inaccurate, procedurally incorrect, and done showing bias to push project through with Wes McCart's signature on May 8, 2025, coming eight days before the signature by the Department of Health approval. My reply. As an example of supposed misrepresentation, item B4E on the SEPA checklist asked, list all noxious weeds and invasive species known to be on or near the site. The applicant answered, none known. This is not a misrepresentation simply because noxious weeds exist in the county. This is an active orchard and noxious weeds control is a mandatory state law. This is like saying that every property owner in Franklin County has noxious weeds because they exist, and if they do not admit it, you are lying or it is a misrepresentation. Next item, information was withheld from the public and contract planners acting as staff are biased and didn't provide an analysis of the information, but instead promoted the proposal. Over 300 pages of information regarding the water project was withheld, and the 90 pages of water project included in the SEPA documentation doesn't meet the requirements for SEPA determination. The cat, my reply, the county had access to water right transfer document related to the Richview Water System and disclosed that information. When we had access to other documents, we really immediately made them available whether requested or not. The SEPA mitigation number three specifically addresses the Group A, public water system and operational fire hydrants are required to get final approval. The Richview Water System approval by Ecology and the Department of Health was included in PC package, packet, and available to the public. Further, it was discussed at the Planning Commission hearing, and a condition of the project was modified to require a conditional use permit for the Richview Water System expansion to this Cherrywood proposal, and will require a separate SEPA review on the system piping and other attributes of installing the system prior to final approval. Next item, much information not provided to the public after request for made. See the attached analysis of applicant's answers and staff finding. My reply, any requests for information were filled. This seems to imply the county failed to answer any questions as they relate to public testimony. Questions during public comment do not require a direct response. However, all of the issues brought up in the public comment were addressed in the record and through the process, including in the Planning Commission's recommendation. Next item, note the unfair practice where the developer and the developer lawyer both received more than the allotted five minutes while all opposing comments were cut short despite the rules read at the beginning. This gives the appearance of favoritism and biased treatment. An applicant is not part of the public testimony. The staff presentation is giving our recommendation to the Planning Commission. As the applicant, they are entitled to have adequate time to present their proposal to the Planning Commission. At the hearing, due to comments being received after the Planning Commission packets were sent out, I personally spent 35 minutes reading those comments into the record so that the Planning Commission members and the public had an opportunity to hear and consider them. Many more comments were in the packet and available to everyone. The applicant spent 14 minutes explaining their application. The public had 31 minutes of testimony with everyone interested given the opportunity. Total combined testimony for the hearing for the public was 66 minutes. I even read the text message I received, although it was, that was not sent in a published manner or to receive comments. Next item, the PUD was recommended for approval based on false statements, inaccurate statements, misrepresentation of Franklin County Code. And it goes on to say about them, percentage of homes and the creeping. All these comments were, were given consideration in the Planning Commission recommendation and follow the legal standard of review as indicated previously. And the last item was that the PUD does not meet the four requirements of the PUD, and I've addressed that previously. Uh, I will add two more little things in here before I conclude. One, there are lammards all over the county. Basin City is one of those lammards. It is not Incorporated City, and it has half acre lots in a very large development area. It is not unusual to have half acre lots in, in the, uh, lammards that are scattered throughout the county. And in multiple other counties, I might add. And one other correction I'd like to make is the calculation of the easement is not true. The open space is not part of the easement. The applicant is not entitled to count the open space section of the easement that would be in, in the skibbit right away. Uh, that is to be kept clear. All the lots are set back with open space between that and the actual, um, easement boundary. On the southern side, that's 250 feet between the Hold Canal, so it's 150 feet from the center of the canal each way, and, or, excuse me, 125 feet. And on the, uh, east side, that is a 100 foot easement that goes through there, and that's 50 feet from the center of the canal each way. And their open space comes from, uh, that point, uh, inward before any lots are proposed to be done. With that, I will, um, conclude my remarks.
Okay, so we've concluded the oral, oral arguments of the closed record appeal, and at this point in time, we'll move into deliberation.
Can I ask a, uh, procedural?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that we go into an executive session for approximately 10 minutes under RCW 42.3110 dash, uh, 1I, after you close the hearing.
I have an important procedural. That's, but that's, that's where we're getting.
Yes, yes.
This is a closed record hearing.
It's a.
Mr. Chairman.
Ask if we were okay with.
Mr. Ballin.
Is, is this appropriate for us to ask clarifying questions?
Yeah, to the participants, yes.
I don't agree with that. That's why I want an executive session.
So you're, you think if we would have a executive session and then come back after the executive session and ask questions at that time?
Well, if we, if we close the hearing, we can't ask questions, so.
But we can't close the hearing until we take a vote, correct?
You're gonna close the, the oral, the oral appeal.
Okay.
For deliberations.
So at this time, I will close the oral appeals, and I would ask that we move into an executive session under the RCW stated, for 10 minutes.
Mr. McCart, and Mr. Briggs, and Mackenzie.
We're gonna go downstairs. We'll move downstairs. Please stay right here. 10 minutes. So we go into executive session, let's say nine o'clock, because.
You want me to speak that into the record? You want me to speak that into the record? How long? We're gonna go into executive session under RCW 4231101I for 10 minutes, starting at nine o'clock. We'll come back into session at 9:10.
On behalf of the Board of Commissioners, I'm reconvening the night meeting to extend it for five additional minutes under the same RCW. At this time, the night meeting is scheduled to resume at 9:15.
We can come back, so I can bring us back. Is it mics on? I'm going to bring us back from executive session. We'll be back in an open meeting, but in recess until all the parties regather.
We're live. Okay, we've come back from executive session with no decisions being made. At this time, we are going to recess this until a later date, I believe. Jeff, Mr. Briggs?
Yeah, that'd work. I guess if you, if that's what the board wants to do, they don't want to deliberate, then they could do a motion for recess.
Yes.
I think it'd be helpful to ask some clarifying questions that I have with all the parties here.
Okay.
So, if you're willing, Mr. Chairman, Mr. McCart, would you come and allow me to please to ask some clarifying questions?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. You, you actually answered quite a few of the questions that I had written down, but I'm just going to go down through a few of them and, and then may ask a few others. There was a comment made by the appellant that people were not provided opportunity to comment that were on the other side of the road. Could you speak to that? I believe that in the record, it provides who we gave notice to, and that was, that was as required. Did I, did I read that accurately?
The record shows that notification was sent out to, within the appropriate mileage, I believe it's one mile of any property owner within one mile of the proposal. That list is generated by our GIS department and supplied to us, and then we published also in there is the public notice.
Thank you.
That was in the paper of record.
That was my understanding as I, as I read that. Several other items were brought up. This area is covered by Fire District Number Three, which is just on the corner of Columbia River Road. And I seen the, the document where they were asked for comment, and I believe they were, they provided none.
No comment.
That is correct.
Thank you. Another thing was that there was a planner that was removed. I believe that planner provided notice that they were leaving our employee and joining the city of Pasco. Is that accurate?
Sir, I have no information on what that employee's reason for leaving or when he left.
Thank you, let me re-
But he came before my employment.
Okay, thank you, that, that-
But my understanding is that he did not work on this project.
Okay, thank you.
This application was filed in February.
You answered the question about open space and the accusation that the canal was being used as some of the open space, so you answered that question. This is within the rural shoreline, shoreline area. That, that information is provided in this record and the maps associated with that. This is consistent with our comp plan, from everything I could read and understand.
Sir, I think that's a determination you need to make in deliberation.
And from everything that I can see with this, this application is consistent with our PUD ordinance. Mr. Chairman, I need to do a little bit more reading, so that'd be it for a moment.
Well, I would suggest that we recess this and do your reading on your own time, and then we will come back and deliberate at a, at a later date and make a decision.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize. I do want, just for the record, you guys are doing a good job. I do think it's irregular. I think this is beyond the statutory processing timelines and the basis for recessing for additional deliberations. I don't see a legal basis. The record's been closed, the arguments have been presented, and, and I think a decision, a deliberation should be made unless there's some-
I believe you represented the Underwoods, and we did this on the Underwood project, but there wasn't an appeal.
There was a, there was a procedural issue on that, on that one, but it is getting late, and, and as long as there's no extra party contacts, no, this is really unusual to, to do it in this context, but-
Mr. Briggs, is this unusual?
According to our code, we're required to deliberate once the, at the conclusion of the hearing. So, I think, you know, with all respect to Mr. Fickus and his point that he made, I think it's possible procedurally for the board to recess this as opposed to deliberating immediately, although I would agree that it's probably not the way the code is structured.
And if I might add, sirs, I believe the proper terminology you should be using is to continue the deliberation.
Yeah, continue.
Not recess.
That's the word. At the beginning, we were asked if we had any opposition to the commissioners' clarification. We don't have any opposition to the commissioners who are present. We would request that Rocky Bullen recuse himself because the person who is eyeing the water is his brother, and so he has family relations.
He's not here tonight, and so he probably will be recusing. I have no idea. Mr. Danzel, you had something to put-
I think that's even more of a reason to delay it a week.
Yes, and based on the volume and complexity of this appeal and proposal, I move to continue these hearing proceedings for deliberation until the next meeting, September 10th, but I believe Mr. Baumann won't be here for the 10th.
Mr. Chairman, I would, with your permission, like to amend your-
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue this hearing proceedings for deliberation until our meeting in September 17th due to the volume and complexity of this appeal.
For me to get my, I, I second. For me to get my information and my findings of fact straight, I, I would like to be able to compile my thoughts and put them on paper so I can present them. Because right now, I've heard so much, and there's so much information, I don't feel I can do a just decision at this time. So, I have seconded. Is there any further discussion?
I think that, that it's well said. You described it, the volume and complexity of, of what we have in front of us today. We should continue this, and so-
Then a motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So with that, we'll move down to- Trying to find my agenda. Here it is, I got it. Moves this down to Commissioner Administrator Updates.
Mr. Chairman-
Mr. Danzel.
Yes, I wish I could give it more complete, when I, you all know that I was in a, in a rather serious automobile accident on Monday.
Yes.
And I wanted to say thank you to everybody that's reached out to wish me well, and people have made me food, I've gotten flowers. I don't know what kind they are, because I don't know what flowers. I never have known the type. It shows you what kind of place you work in when people in your county think that way and, and react and respond that way, and I'd like to thank you all for allowing me to do that, too. The main thing I'd like to talk about tonight is our budget process. We've had a couple of things that have popped up lately that I just want to do a reminder, and Clerk of the Board Alvarez, maybe you and I can send out an email reminder with all this pertinent information when it comes to. But I just want folks, as a reminder, to know that the state fiscal year runs from July 1st to July, June 30th. The federal fiscal year runs from October 1st to September 30th. The long session in Olympia during odd years is 105 days, and the short, short session is 60 days. And you're asking me, why am I saying all this stuff? It's good to know for jeopardy, probably. But the amount of requests that we have received, people telling us that we've got to do something or else in two days we lose the funding. I want to go on the record and tell people that it'll be my recommendation to advise the Board of County Commissioners to let that funding lapse. And that if you're serious about wanting to get that taken care of, it's incumbent upon you and the department heads and the other elected officials to understand the budgeting process, to understand where your revenue comes from. And it's patently unfair to come to you gentlemen and say, hey, here, you got a day to do this, or else we're going to lose the funding, and I've got an anecdote on it. It happened to me when I was a commissioner for a dump truck. Now, who the hell wouldn't want a dump truck, right? You're going to want one ever since you were a kid, you wanted to tonka a dump truck. So, we signed on to it, and a grader, a road grader that was joystick operated, pretty cool thing. And it was one of those deals, had to have it, had to have it last day. If we don't, the money goes away. What was not known by the commissioners when we signed it is that within 15 years, we had to be completely carbon neutral. So, we bought a dump truck and a grader, and we had to return it and sell it at a loss so that we could try to pay some of our funding back, because we had to have it right before the funding ran out. And my message to everybody is that if I get a message like that, not only are we not going to put it on the agenda, but I'm going to put it back on you, that that's your responsibility. How in the world is it the Board of County Commissioners' responsibility to manage every other department's funding? So, that's number one. The second thing that needs to be crystal clear, and I've seen this, and you've seen this about five or six times in the last, I don't know, about two months. When a budget is allocated, it is not your personal budget. So, if someone comes and they're short on something, and they say, hey, I've already figured out, because I talked to Jeff, and Jeff told me that he can let me use his supply budget to finish my project. No, that's not your personal money that you can give away. That is the county taxpayers' dollars. And the county taxpayers hire the Board of Commissioners to make those allocations, and so I will get a policy on the books, but that's the end of that today, too. Any of this, we're going to take, we don't have enough money to finish-
if you were to look at it from a proportionate share standpoint, that Franklin County can't afford our proportionate share. But I don't know, because I can't get the questions answered that I have. For instance, it was over a year ago that it was decided that Comprehensive was going to run the facility, but as of my understanding today, we still do not have a contract for Comprehensive to run that facility. And I am very concerned that we are more than $41 million into that facility. We are asking our legislators for more money, and we have a brainstorm of adding housing to it, apparently, that we already have grant funding of $3.8 million. And I don't know how this facility is going to operate on local revenues. The state has been very clear from the beginning that they will help build it, but it's our responsibility, our being our community of the tri-cities, to figure out how to operate that facility. Went to a Transit Board meeting last week. City of Pasco has a new mayor. Congratulations to Mayor David Milney and Mayor Pro-Tim Charles Grimm on their election to the mayor and the mayor pro-Tim positions. Had my meeting with the PA's office last week about litigation, impending litigation, agenda meetings with staff. Had a Hapo meeting with HWL. Had a meeting with Washington State Department of Transportation about traffic off of the freeway around the Hapo Center, just a brief meeting with them. And just wanted to point this out. I've been, I've received several complaints or concerns that a while back, we granted or we authorized a gate to be installed out on Columbia River Road that was supposed to be open from dusk to dawn, or dawn to dusk. And I received complaints that that was no longer happening, and in some cases, it was just left closed pretty fairly permanently. So, I went out there about 11:30 in the morning and found it to be closed, locked, and people walking in for access. A lot of people use that. That was my concern at the time that ordinance was passed here, and so would like to have an understanding from the Sheriff's Department why we're not following up with the ordinance the Board of County Commissioners passed. I'm not sure if it was an ordinance or if it was a resolution authorizing that to be closed, but would like to have a understanding from the Sheriff's Department of why that we are not following the direction of the Board of County Commissioners in the closing of that road and the opening of it. Mr. Chairman, that's my report.
Thank you. Last week consisted of the Columbia Snake River Irrigators. I did not attend. I couldn't attend because of a conflict, and I called and talked to the head of the Board and got information from him about what's good, what good is coming out of this administration as far as our dams and the irrigation water that they are taking out of the snake in the Columbia. Columbia Basin Sustainable Water Coalition, where I, actually, they talked about the Pasco aquifer, and I said, well, the Pasco aquifer, they've admitted that this is Columbia Basin water, so this is water that's already been paid for for the operation, maintenance, and delivery thereof, so this is the farmer's water. We can't charge them again. I said, let the farmers draw from this aquifer and then divert the water that we don't receive from the Columbia Basin Irrigation District to the East High, so that they can create more farmland, get more farmers involved. We need more farmers. Ben Franklin Transit, where I attended the meeting, where they went through their 2025 to 2031 planned capital expenses. And in this, in all their information, I actually had Wes McCart, man that wears many hats, help me with some questioning and facts, but they, in their own information, they've got this pie locals, $136,863,169, 67% of the budget for the 2025-2031 planned capital expenses. Federal government is 20%, state government is 14%, and yet they're dictating to us what we got to buy for buses. We got the tail wagging the dog here, boys and girls. This is ridiculous. Here's some of the questions that I have asked. With 10,200 trips a day and a district population of 287,689 people, that means that if each trip equals one person, Ben Franklin Transit is only serving 3.5% of the people. Considering that most people require a minimum of two trips, a round trip if they're going to and from work, that means Ben Franklin is only serving 1.8% of the people. We're talking about a budget of, this equates to 5,100 total people. Ben Franklin Transit is running an $88 million operation for 5,100 people. That is over $17,250 per person. I have a whole list of other questions here. Some of them I asked, some of them I didn't, because I already knew the answers to. You have a total of 368 vehicles, and the minimum usage is 267 vehicles. That means you have 27% of the fleet sitting idle. They say the federal government requires a 20% idle sitting of the buses. Well, that's 27%. And then here we got the tail wagging the dog again. I will go over more of these questions that I ask at this meeting, next meeting, because I'm not going to prolong this meeting any further than that, but I have a lot more questions that I ask. We had the preliminary pre-certification election, then the certification of the election, and then our agenda meeting, and I appreciate, and I tell you, this man was hired on to be tough. He's here tonight, and he was in a serious automobile accident, and I appreciate him. I've had several calls on the purchase of land out in the farm blocks, a farm by the Port of Pasco, at an unprecedented rate, 27,500. As a farmer, I can't pencil 12,000 to make these crops that we're getting today. 12,000 bucks, and I can't make it work. I don't know how they're paying 27.5. Calls on the open spaces, the taxes on open spaces, taxes are equated by like-minded sales, lease rates, and then yields and commodity pricing, which is supposed to be weighed the heaviest. I've got guys calling me here wondering, when are they going to reassess my property taxes and lower them? Because our commodity prices are in the hole. It's terrible out there. We've got people that are going to go bankrupt. It's not a good time out there. Got people complaining, they've worked the hardest for the least amount of money they've ever earned. So, that's the end of my report. From there, we're going to go down to public comment, if there's anybody for public comment.
If you're willing.
Yep.
The information you just provided on Ben Franklin Transit, so this is a request. Would you provide that to our administrator and ask him to work with our auditor and compile that and be able to provide that to us as like a fact sheet that we can provide?
These questions here?
Yep. And at that meeting, I ask the staff at Transit to provide us a county-by-county breakdown so that we have a way to evaluate the people served in Franklin County, based on the money, roughly 18 million a year that the Franklin County taxpayers provide to Transit.
Yes.
So, that would be good. And then the port purchasing Franklin County farmland, I think it might be appropriate for us to ask our administrator to draft a letter on our behalf that we would send to the port commissioners and ask for, I'm not sure exactly what it is, maybe we think about it a little bit, but ask for understanding of what their plan is, because that is direct impact to the farmers of Franklin County. And I think we need to have an understanding of what are they doing and why. And I think it's appropriate for us to ask that question.
Well, I know that whole, I know that whole inside game, and I don't feel comfortable stating it tonight, but I will probably state it next meeting. I know exactly what's going on. And so, the Port of Pasco asks for us for funds. If this is the way they're going to treat our young farmers that are trying to get a start with land purchases of this high of magnitude, how are our young people even going to get into farming?
I-
Or maintain a farm that they've been given, I'm hoping to pass our farm on to my sons, but with this kind of pressure.
If you have rental rates in the neighborhood of $1,000 an acre a year, and you're buying farm ground for 27 years, it takes 27 years just to get to even-
That rental rate is only on potatoes.
I recognize that, but I'm trying to use the best-case scenario and saying, there's no chance, a lifetime to get there? There's no way.
No.
So, that's why I think it would be appropriate to ask for, ask them for official written understanding.
I've had three prominent farmers, and I'm not talking about just, I'm talking about prominent. These people have big farms, and they're the ones calling me and asking me what the hell's going on here, and trying to get to the bottom of it. But I think this is a call to all farmers. Port of Pasco meeting is on Wednesdays, the same as our meeting, and I believe it starts at nine o'clock. So, I think farmers should be showing up, asking them, what are they doing? This is our, this is our neck of the woods. This is our community, and these farmers, they are irate about this, and they need to go to that port and ask them, what is going on here?
Similar to what happened with the Department of Natural Resources buying a large farm just on the east edge of town.
Yes.
Did, same consequences, where the, where that our government is our biggest competition, and that's wrong.
And the Port of Pasco is government. That's government money competing with the private sector. This is not what government's supposed to be doing. Now, that's the, that concludes my report. We go down to public comment. Is there anybody for public comment?
Say nobody coming forward, nobody on the phones?
Do we have any reason for an executive session?
Close, we have a five-minute closed session.
No executive session, but a closed minute five? Okay. So, at this time, we'll recess into a closed session.
Adjourn, adjourn, and then we'll-
Yeah, I'll adjourn the meeting, and we'll move into a closed session.